Good evening, everyone.
It doesn't matter.
Good evening. This is the time and place set for the regular May 2023 meeting of the City Royal Oak Planning Commission. I will call the meeting to order and we'll start at my far right if the commissioners will introduce themselves for the record.
Anne Beeky, good evening.
Clyde Esprit.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Nick Garchowski, interim city attorney.
Woody Gantina.
Jim Allison.
Mayor Mike Forney.
And I'm Gary Cusado, the chair. I want to welcome Clyde Esprit back to the Planning Commission. Welcome. Looking forward to your service again. All right, is there anything, before we get to the approval of the meeting, is there anything that any of the planning commissioners want to add to the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll stick with the agenda. All right, first order of business is the approval.
That would be the appropriate time to do it.
All right.
I would suggest that.
By taking advice of council, is there anything that any of the commissioners would like to remove from the agenda? Mr. Gantina.
Based on the note from Mr. Twing, I think we should remove the Vincetta Bridges Historic District Report on the agenda tonight.
Okay, going back to council, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there any...
So I guess I will move that we remove the Vincetta Historic Bridge Report.
Second by Mr. Allison. Okay, any discussion on this?
And then we would see it in June, I would suspect, assume. Is that correct?
Mr. Twing, does that automatically go to the next meeting or do they have to, the petitioner, have to take some action?
If the motion is to postpone to a future meeting, when they make a request to put it back on the agenda, that's what we do. If you make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting, then it'll be on the next meeting's agenda. So it depends on how you word your motion.
Okay, so I'm going to go back, because I wasn't paying that close of attention to Mr. Gantina. Is your motion to postpone to the next meeting or simply to postpone?
So I originally stated to remove it from the agenda. My intent is to postpone it until the applicant would like to bring it back.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone item number...
D2.
D2 from the agenda.
Yeah, I support it still. We need clarification. The reason we're postponing it is because the petitioner has asked us to delay because they're still doing some studies. And so I'm hesitant to put it for the next meeting. I think we just leave it open. When they complete their studies, it'll come back and get it on the agenda.
All right, very good. Thank you for the clarification information. Is there any other discussion of this motion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote on the motion to postpone item D2 from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. D2 is postponed. All right. Now we go to the approval of the meeting minutes from April 11, 2023. If the commissioners had an opportunity to look over the minutes, if they have any questions, comments, corrections, or a motion.
Mr. Cusado, just for clarification's sake, my understanding of Robert Sorrells is even though I wasn't on this body last month, having read the minutes, I can vote on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, I just want to clarify that.
All right.
Was there a motion to approve the minutes for the April 11 meeting?
Okay, I'm going to say he started first. And so, motion by Mr. Esprit to approve the meeting minutes from April 11. Is that a second, Mr. Allison?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion to approve of the minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Meeting minutes are approved. All right, next order of business is public comment on non-agenda items. If a member of the public would like to come forward and speak on an issue that is not on our agenda, this is the time to do it. Please raise your hand or step forward, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to address the commission. Right here. Good evening.
Phil Harrison, 2729 Trafford Royal Oak. I understand that the city is countering the no to rezoning signs by claiming that the master plan outcome is not predetermined. We have listened to the city commission for two years talking about urbanization, the missing middle in housing, accessory dwelling units, and affordable housing without defining what that means. Every consultant that the commission interviewed supported urbanization. The selected consultants pushed the elimination of single-family zoning in Holland, Michigan. Their Birmingham, Michigan, final master plan continues to push accessory dwelling units for further study. They just don't want to give up. Page 36 of their summary report of the February 25 public meetings mentions the 15-minute city, a concept proposed worldwide by devout communist Klaus Schwab. The city manager alluded to zoning changes during the budget meetings when justifying the request for a management analyst to assist with the Human Rights Commission, sustainability, aging in place, and special projects as needed. I'm concerned to hear that the charrettes will include a group of stakeholders in addition to the consultant. This is the same approach that the city commission used for the Centennial Park design. The concern is that these stakeholders will be supportive of the city commission agenda. My question is, will these meetings be charrettes or charades? I'm further concerned that the residents at large do not realize that they will not have the opportunity to vote on the master plan. Given that I've got a minute and 15 seconds, I would like to comment on the Vincetta historical. Jim asked me if I was going to comment on it. I've been a resident of Royal Oak since 1942, and I remember as a kid riding my bicycle across those arched overpasses. I can actually remember when the swales were much deeper and water actually ran under the bridges. I'm opposed to the sidewalks that they're putting in there. It's ridiculous. And I really think that it should be designated as a historic, whatever the term would be, in order to preserve them. It's part of the character of Royal Oak. It's a wonderful neighborhood. I've had neighbors and friends, Clarence Kimball used to live there. I was a friend of his cousin, and we went over there frequently. And it just, just leave well enough alone, I guess is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to come up and address the commission? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and we'll go on to new business. The first one being SP 230508 site plan for 3701 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing, can you introduce this to us?
Certainly. The planning commission members may be familiar with this site. It is the Basha Building on the west side or southbound side of Woodward Avenue between Albert and Merrill. The petitioner is proposing to add on to the west side of the building in the area where the bank drive-through facilities exist. That addition is approximately 1,350 square feet of gross floor area. The intent of that addition is for additional MRI machines. They are also proposing to renovate the bank building adjacent to that into pharmacy operation. That's approximately 2,178 square feet of area or space to be remodeled. Those are depicted on the site plan packet that you have in your, or online for your review. In terms of the staff review, there are really two contingencies pointing to the site plan. There used to be a, or there is a, drive-through lane along the north side of the site, along Albert. Staff is recommending that that be removed and that the green belt along Albert be widened to incorporate that area. And then secondly, you also see attached to the cover letter, a chart that identifies the overall aspects and configuration of the site in terms of a breakdown of the use of the building, the parking requirements and so on. We're recommending that that be added to their site plan packet, replacing the one that is depicted on the first sheet of the site plan so that it matches the staff's review. Other than that, the standard contingencies are recommended in terms of any right-of-way paving or utility work complying with city ordinances, compliance with the lighting, signage, performance bonds, and so on.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Twing at this moment? All right, seeing none, is the petitioner here. This is for the Basha Open MRI. Good evening. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you seek.
I agree. Thank you for, you know, opening that issue for discussion. The same project was approved over a year ago on the south side of the building to take part of the parking, which I think about like three, four parking spots would be taken by the expansion for that one room for MRI. And after the bank become vacant, we thought, take it from there to make it at that northwest side of the building, will save those three parking spots. In addition, give us more room for use some of that property in the bank area, including the corridor or the bathroom, and maybe a little spot for break or sink. So we thought that would help, not hurt, and we're happy to see that expansion succeed. The state have awarded us that license. In the beginning, I was thinking, should I do it in Royal Oak or within 10 miles the state allows? The final decision stay Royal Oak where most of our business is. Even so, we have other location in Dearborn and Stericite. And again, I don't think we are going to take or remove any parking spots available, and I think that's good use of the space triggered by the bank departure.
All right. Do you have any issue with the contingencies recommended by the department?
I have to look at the implementation and see what the, I did not see it earlier, my sincere apology. But we'd be glad to, yeah, just to do here, renovate that area where it used to be the drive-through. I don't think we'll be any problem with that, right? Yeah, we have no problem with renovating that area for organizing it since there is no more drive-through.
All right. Are there, and who's the gentleman here, just for the record?
My name is Al Asabi. I'm building engineer with Basha Diagnostics. Second thing, what Dr. Basha was saying, we are, we have reviewed the staff plan comments, and we incorporate them. We're willing to address these contingencies. And the overall numbers that we're coming up with for the parking spots actually lowers our deficiency with this expansion. So with the revised site plan, we'll have less deficiency on the parking. Basically, we're adding more parking spots after this renovation.
Yeah, in general, I think in the medical business of diagnostic imaging radiology and MRI, the parking spots are not as needed as primary family practice, where there are huge room for the MR machine and its equipment, so they have only one technician and one patient. And since it's organized over hours scheduled, so there is not much of walk-in, so the number of patients in the waiting room or the space is very limited. So that reason, I think, I think probably our building have the biggest parking spots of any neighbor on Woodward, except Beaumont. So we thank you. Hopefully you'll approve of it.
All right, I was going to ask, there's, don't go away. If there's questions for the petitioner, Ms. Beeky.
So just to understand correctly, you know, we like to keep a reduction of parking when it's possible for the green space, like the drive-through issue. And when you say there's a deficiency, I'm understanding the deficiency is relative to the numbers the city would like you to have, but not relative to the numbers you need for your daily work. Because your daily work, you don't need more parking.
No, no, for, the deficiency here is being defined by what's in the city record as in for, by code. That deficiency has been addressed through variances. It's grandfathered in, but basically, we're getting closer to meet the code with what we're proposing here.
But even with what you have right now, do you really need more parking?
We don't.
For your business?
If anything, the staking line, we're fine with eliminating all these 13 or 16 spots for practical use, but we're fine with doing that for city planning purposes.
So can I ask Tim a question at the same time, or no?
Please.
So related to that, just so I'm clear, if we would like them to be able to pursue and not add the parking because they don't need it, again, and consistent with the idea that you don't build more parking than you need, even though we still have it in our plan, would they then have to go to the zoning for an approval for variation?
For clarity, staff's not saying they're short parking for this use.
Oh, okay, they're not.
They're, they're short parking for the overall site based on prior actions and activity. They're adding spaces to facilitate what they have to match what they're taking away. So we're not saying they need zoning board action to allow this to move forward.
Okay.
That's not, that's not part of our staff recommendation.
But what's in our documents now, they do have to, they have to have more parking than they actually need per square footage of the building.
Well, we didn't evaluate it based, again, it's based on the existing building.
Right, right. I just ask that for future reference and again, for our own reference, that when businesses don't need as much parking, and I understand the long-term historical, that sometimes we have more parking than we need. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I think to my recor, I'm sorry if I start without permission.
You'd please.
You know, to my recollection, I think managers of the city can address the issue that code for medical has changed with time for reduce the lead per square foot of the building. I think maybe the building has surplus now if we go with the new calculations. Even so, half of the parking lot is empty all day long here because of the change of the nature of the medical businesses.
All right, either, I'm going to go with Mr. Gantina first.
Quick question on the contingency to remove the driveway on Albert and replace it with green belt. Is it, was it staff's intent to just put back the amount of green belt, the same width as what occurs on like the west side of Albert? Or was it staff's intent to remove that entire driveline essentially back to the radius part and fill that whole area in with green space?
It's our recommendation that the entire driveway be removed. If you look at, if you can see the picture from here all the way over, and that just become part of the green belt. The parking along the front would remain, and these spots in here would remain, and the drive-through would go through. It would simply be the driveline here along Albert.
I'm sorry, maybe I missed another sentence. So it's not the driveway connecting to Albert? That's not true. I see.
Okay, Mr. Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allison.
On the same subject, I just needed, first of all, good to see you again, Dr. Basha.
Thank you.
Going at the site plan, where we've got, we've got a bubble around the corner of the parking island. You've got the narrow driveway, which was the old approach to the drive-through, and you've got this bank of places that are surrounded by a parking island. Is it the intent to take that parking island out of there and open that space up? Or is your intent, because I'm not sure what the corner is bubbled for. This has a number two, but I can't find the legend out here.
They added two parking spaces.
Oh, is that what it is? Two, okay, it's two parking spaces, three. Okay, so your intent then is to leave the island there. And then what we're asking for is to do that, you widen that green space between the island and Albert so that, so that we don't have that narrow, I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the Google Earth picture, and that's a pretty narrow driveway, it's one car wide.
Right.
So I think what they were trying to do is make that a little bit wider. But I would suggest also, we don't go any narrower than what we have the green belt in the back to the western side.
We'd be glad to work with the city to do whatever makes it easier and better for the people driving in and parking in.
Yeah.
And not necessarily increase any space. We don't mind increasing the what, you know, the green belt.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if that driveway between the island and the, the green belt on Albert remains narrow, I think we're going to have a problem. Because I think you're still going to have two-way traffic. There's no, you're going to have two-way traffic trying to get in and out of that, and that may create a problem. So just trying to figure out a way to make enough space in there. And if we take the island out and then move the green belt back on Albert a little bit, I think you could accomplish better flow on your parking lot, although you may lose some spaces, I'm not sure.
Right, so the way we've been looking at it is, you know, the one of two options to your, to Mr. Woody's question, we either widen the green belt behind Albert, on Albert Street, and kind of eat out that driveway, make it a whole wider green belt, and then have the parking start from there. Or we could take that green belt on Albert and demo that green island ahead of it and use that as our back for our parking.
I like your first idea.
Okay.
Bring the Albert green belt out to the front edge of that, and then you, those two little side wings can go away, maybe, I don't know. Yeah, that would, that would get a smart green belt.
That's what the contingency is.
Yeah, okay.
To remove that.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? I guess I would ask for Mr. Twing, just a clarification. So what, what you just heard, the turning, turning that single driveline into a green space, I don't know how much detail is contained in your contingency, but your hearing is acceptable to the department?
Well, again, our, our recommendation is to make it all green space and extend the parking along the north side of the existing over to the driveway on the basis, one, you're getting rid of hard surface space and turning it into green space, and two, parking isn't an issue at this site, so adding more is not our recommendation.
Commissioner Douglas.
So I'm not entirely following what my fellow commissioners are asking about, but, excuse me. So do I infer or see from your drawing that there's a yellow curb that goes from, between the island and the building, basically? Is that curb being removed?
Yes.
Okay, that's, so, you know, customers or, you know, patients who may arrive and pull in off Woodward into the front parking lot will still be easily get, be able to get back to the back parking lot, but what you've done, what you've just done is eliminated the need to channel Pat drivers who are going into the drive-through.
Yeah.
Correct, basically, a staking lane.
Got it, thank you.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner? Okay, I got, I got two quick ones. Number one, it's a little hard for me to tell what this building is going to look like. It says Burnish CMU. Tell me what the building is going to look like, if you can.
The building will look exactly like an addition that was placed on the southwestern end of the building two years ago that was almost identical in use, finished materials, everything. That was approved for a previous MRI addition in 2016, and we're basically duplicating that.
I see. Okay. What is the, I'm just curious, I mean, it's a box to have all the MRI. How is the roof constructed?
It's going to be a flat roof pitching towards the west end of it, I believe. We'll have a parapet wall matching again to the one on the previous addition. There will be one chiller unit that is about three or four feet high, exactly, again, similar to the one previously approved.
Okay, just, I'm just curious, now I'm looking at it, I didn't realize that that other, these are empty roofs. Did you consider a green roof?
We did not, no, not really. It's not something I personally looked into, but...
I finally bring it up because it looks like that's another space that could, could be green if it was one of those boxes that was built sturdily. But, Mr. Allison.
Along that same line, the roof over the MRI, does that need to be a special structure? That doesn't need to be concrete, heavy steel?
It does not. To, you're referring to shielding for MRI and for the magnetic field. We take care of that by doing copper plates below decking, so it's, we don't use the actual decking for that purpose.
So it doesn't need to attach to the roof, but the structure's still got to support the weight of the shielding, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just afraid if we start messing with that roof a little bit, what are we doing to the actual structure of the MRI? That's why I asked the question.
Other consideration, and I know not enough about green roofs, but the other consideration about MRIs is that they use, in addition to the chiller, there's nitrogen, so we have quench vents coming out with, you know, the, the special venting for the MRI. So it's a four-inch vent, but I don't know what it does for greens.
Okay, just a question.
Just, that might have been my curiosity.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, hearing none. Is there discussion on the site plan, approval of the site plan? A motion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'll have approval of the site plan with the contingencies as defined by the staff. Seems a pretty benign use. People need MRIs. They've already done this at the other end of the building. We can see an example of what they've done. I'm a longtime supporter of Royal Oak business. I think it's a good plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gantina. All right, the motion is to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies. Is there discussion?
I just want to make one comment. Again, the only thing we really, we really discussed here was again, the green space and extending it. So to whatever degree I see the landscaping plan is not done yet, that you can consider effective landscaping, maybe native plants, those kind of things in line with our sustainability plan, just for your consideration as you work on that for the next phase, but I support this motion.
All right, further discussion on either end of the table here? Okay, it's not a hand, it's a thumb, right?
Neither.
Okay. All right, hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck. Continued success to you.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business is SV, signed various, SV 230401, 28992 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing.
This item was in front of you at your April 11 meeting. You did postpone it till this meeting. Going back and looking at it, I will simply say there was a communication issue in terms of why they weren't here last month, if you'll recall. So the request is in front of you to allow two canopy signs on the west facade or the portion along Woodward. Allow portion of the sign along the west side to project above the canopy. It'd be the second one. To waive 11.9 square feet of the maximum, eight-foot square feet of canopy allowed on the facade on the west side and waive similarly at 5.9, the maximum, eight square feet for the north and south portions of the canopy. You will see those signs depicted in the aerial, in the report, or the Google Street View in the report, as well as the details provided in the spec sheets in your packet.
Just to clarify, does that mean the signs are already there?
Yes.
All right. All right. Any questions for Mr. Twing? All right, is the petitioner present?
Yes.
If you'll come up, introduce yourself and explain why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Hello, my name is Sarah Meissen. I am here on behalf of our customer, the Sitgo Gas Station. We are requesting a variance for the upgrade of the current signage at the existing Sitgo store located at 28992. store located at 28992 Woodward Ave. in Royal Oak, Michigan. The signage proposed is based on a brand standard that the Sitgo company uses uniformly across all of the store locations. Sitgo uses this branding to not only identify their stores, but to identify their values to the customers. Sitgo is also well-known for their products, and they take pride in reflecting the same reputation with their company branding and store image across all locations. Therefore, we kindly request for the variance to be granted for the proposed signage below. We ask that you allow the portion of the canopy sign on the west canopy fascia to project beyond the top of the canopy, and we also ask that you waive the 11.9 square foot maximum permitted eight square, eight square feet canopy sign area on the west canopy fascia, as well as waiving the 5.9 square foot for maximum permitted eight square feet canopy sign area on the north and south canopy fascia. The request for larger signage will not require a change in the use or the activity, in that we were, we are proposing that the signage will increase the value of the property and the properties surrounding that area. The upgrade of that signage, of the signage, I'm sorry, will have new LED lighting, and it will also decrease the risk of a fire hazard and also help with safety when our customers are feeling at night. The lack, we fear that the lack of the signage on this property will hinder the customer flow into the business, in turn hindering the number of sales. The signage proposed is also used to save the customer time by identifying the different sections of the Sitgo brand on the canopy. In conclusion, we do hope that you will consider accepting the signage as proposed. We do believe that the upgrades will drive business for Sitgo and in turn increase profits for the township as well. And that's it.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? When did the signs go up?
I could not tell you, as we are the ones that did not install them.
Okay, and what is your capacity?
We are the ones who kind of took over, we finished out the project, we were contacted to kind of fix the issues at this location as the customer was not happy with the original contractor, the original contractor that they hired.
You're talking about signage contractor?
Yes, and they are here as well.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ellison?
Is your sign contractor one, has worked in City of Royal Oak before? Do we know?
I can ask him, he is here, can I ask him to come up?
Okay, now, the only reason I ask, is I'm trying to find out how we got to this point. I mean, was, were the signs installed not knowing they needed a permit? And so now we're in a situation where we're asking for forgiveness rather than permission, which is not uncommon. But I guess I wanted to say, if the sign contractor has done business in the City of Royal Oak before, then they should know that they need a sign permit before they start construction. So I'm trying to clear that up, because it'd be, it'd pull us down to a question of credibility. I mean, I don't have a major problem with what we're doing here, but I do have a major problem if we just ignored the process, thinking it was easy to get forgiveness rather than permission.
I believe that there was probably some oversight on their end, I would like to directly ask them, as they are here.
Yeah.
I just kind of took over, because I am, I am aware of the process, where I'm Basel Construction, so I work very closely with Kevin Duhannick on all of my projects here, so this isn't to speak on us, I do know the process, but I'm not sure I can speak on my constructions behalf. Again, I believe it was just an oversight on their end, I do believe that they are aware of how things work now, because I'm pretty sure that they have an item on the agenda next, so I do see that they did fix their original mistake by going through the proper channels, by, you know, coming before you at the planning commission this evening for their other project located at 1708 Crooks Road. So, we do ask your forgiveness, as we are not sure how or why, honestly, the signs went up, I'm just here to kind of.
I mean, it's not the first time that a business like yours has thrown in a situation, because you do have branding restrictions, and they have certain size signs, and they don't care what the local zoning ordinances are. And so, you know, it's a throwback on us, and, and again, the sign contractor, if he doesn't know that you're supposed to get a permit, will go ahead and just start applying that, which is where we're at right now. So I'm just wanting to be sure, depending, I'm not sure what's gonna happen here tonight, but going forth, the sign contractor needs to know the rules.
No, I understand.
Are there other questions, Mr. Gantina?
Well, I guess, respond to that a little bit, I have a little bit more hurt about this, because the, the signage at the corner of the property is updated signage as well, and that required some relief and came before us when those updates were happening. I don't know if it's the same contractor that installed those updates, and the same contractor that installed the ones that are in front of us today, but either way, the owner of the property clearly knows that there is a process in place, due to the fact that they were already in front of us for the corner signage. So, I'm kind of in the same boat, in the sense that if it was an honest mistake, I think that's, you know, a little bit more understandable, however, I'm not sure that's the case in this situation, so I'd really like to know when these signs went up, who installed them, because it's, you know, we're in an unfortunate situation where if, it seems to me that the rules were known and purposefully overlooked, so.
Ms. Binky, is that a pencil?
And I guess I just wanted to comment, also, with regard to design standards, again, as we work on clarifying our master plan and going through zoning and some of these things, I would like to see us, in general, have more clear design standards, and I think a city does have a right to say to a corporation that they have to modify. I think we see in cities that have higher design standards, corporations do it all the time, whether it's McDonald's with only a sign on the door, or it's a gas station, and so I think we fully have the right to modify and ask owners to modify those corporate standards to fit with our local qualifications and qualities, and I think that's an important distinction we make in cities that want to retain their own character.
I wasn't.
Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, I certainly wasn't implying that, you know, it's okay to do this, I'm trying to find how we got to where we're at now, if it was an honest mistake, or if it was a deliberate mistake, which may cause me, in my decision, what I'm gonna do on this.
Other questions for the petitioner? Do we have another, is that, is that the sign contractor?
Hi, my name is Yara Manassar, I'm with Maya Construction and Imaging. We were originally hired on this project to do the install of the canopy image. When the owners approached us, they, they said everything was ready, all we had to do was just call Sitgo, and they'll send us the material, and we have to install. So that's all we did, we asked if everything is ready on your end, they said yes. It was a lack of communication, it was miscommunication, we were under the impression that they had already taken care of variances and pulling permits, but it was not, and that's why we're here today.
All right, thank you. Other questions on this, let me ask a quick question, you guys may or may not know this, this property turned over in 2021, February 2021, something like that? These are relatively new owners?
I'm not sure. Not that I know.
Well, if you don't know, you don't know. All right. You guys weren't involved in any other upgrades at this station, were you?
No, no.
All right.
Again, we just stepped in, and we were hired to install the image on the canopy, and that's what we did. Material that came in, there was a mistake in the material when it was originally shipped from Sitgo. The triform came 42 inches, it was supposed to be 36 inches, but we found that out after the fact. Once we got to this point, we started digging in and asking questions and finding out that that was a mistake from the shipper. If the triform is the issue, we can have that minimized to a 36-inch triform opposed to the 42-inch.
Can I get a clarification from Mr. Twing? So, did the petitioner initiate this request, or did the, did the department approach the property?
I believe, looking at the letters from the Building Department in their review, they may have found that this went up, contacted the property owner that it was in violation or needed a sign permit, and then they submitted, to get to denial of the permit because it didn't comply, and then it's in front of you.
All right. All right, other questions or comments for the petitioners? Do you have another person who wants to speak?
Yes.
Are you?
I might be able to help clarify a little bit.
And you are?
My name is Trish Barak, I work for Barak Enterprises, we are the supplier for that gas station, so we are involved in the image from the beginning, and yes, it is a newer owner. And the street sign was done by a different vendor, Aver Sign Company, who we do all of our signs with, so that was a totally different vendor, which is why they went through the appropriate process. And yes, it was really a miscommunication. It was our first time working with Maya, and we assumed that they knew that they had to pull permits, because every other vendor we've ever worked with has always done that, and it fell through the cracks, and just, it was, you know, miscommunication, mistake, definitely not intentional.
All right.
But as she did say, we can do a smaller trimark, they do have a smaller one, if that helps the situation at all. I personally think at night the site looks beautiful, like, it's gorgeous.
Mr. Gantina?
It's unclear how far the, the current 42-inch trident sticks up above the roof there. Do we know if the smaller 36-inch would alleviate that issue, or would it still be sticking up above?
It sits within the fascia, it does not extend above or below it.
The existing fascia is 36-inch right now.
Okay. So that would alleviate that one issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just one other quick point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um, sorry, I should wait. When we're talking about the two signs on the, facing the one direction, and one is only allowed, is the, are the two signs the name and that triangle?
Correct.
Okay, okay, just to make sure I understand that, okay, okay.
I have to ask a question, because you mentioned the site at night. You are aware that you're way, way overlit above the lighting ordinance, you understand that, yes?
I am not aware of that, but it is very brightly lit, so I could see how that could be true.
Is there some, are you, are you in a position to do something about that lighting?
Um, I can definitely make heavy suggestions, I'm not the owner, so, but, yeah, I mean, if it's an issue from the city and it needs to be reduced, and we have properties in Birmingham where it's heavily reduced, so, yeah, absolutely.
Is there different ordinance in Birmingham, or just?
I believe there is.
Oh, okay.
Yes, when you drive north, if you look at the gas stations, they're very dim at night.
Okay, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily agree with your characterization, but, okay.
Well, I mean, as you drive up and down Woodward, you can definitely see the difference, there's a Shell and a Speedway, and they are very dim.
All right.
I mean, they're great gas stations, but they're not bright.
Because of the underdecking, not the actual image itself?
It's the underdecking lighting.
Well, the underdecking lighting and the pole lightings, the new LED pole lightings are very, very bright, and they're bright in the property, so, anyways, different subject for a different time, I voiced my opinion about that.
I mean, I can definitely discuss it with the owners, for sure, no problem.
That would be, that would be wonderful.
No problem.
All right, Ms. Binky?
Just related to that, I think, because this is a request for a variance, I mean, can we address the lighting issue at this time as well?
I'm gonna say no, with much effort, but I'm gonna say no.
But it would seem appropriate if we would give out a variance to address that lighting issue, if it is out of compliance, in my opinion.
I guess the question I would ask is, is the lighting currently installed out of, out of compilation with the variance? I mean, is it, are they installed incorrectly, or are they just too bright for some people?
They're not too bright for some people, they're way over the stated limits.
So they have, they have a site plan that designated how bright these lights should be, and they haven't followed it?
I, I don't know that, because I think the light, my recollection is the light was upgraded after the change in ownership, but I can't.
Okay, but still, somewhere along the line, if they, if they changed the lighting, there should be a site plan change, a request for change.
Should be.
Should be, but we, and we're talking about doing something about this, and I don't even know if they're in violation yet.
They are in violation. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just to that point, I would say that if it's a compliance issue, they have to go into compliance, and if they wish to be outside of compliance, then they can come back here and, with a site plan and ask for brighter light. So, in my opinion is, there's a rule out there, there's a site plan out there, if you guys are, not you guys, but, you know, if the owner is out of compliance, just like if there's a noise violation on decibel levels, if there's something that's not the plan, then it has to be rectified, right? So I think that's a separate topic.
Has he been notified? I don't, I don't know, he's been notified of anything like that, I know he did change the light bulbs, because in general, the oil companies prefer brightly lit sites, because it helps with safety.
Come in, you know, this is.
And safety, too. There's a lot of concern about people going and shopping at night at gas stations, and having some concern, so brightly lit helps.
Who was next? Were you next, or you?
I'm next.
Okay, she's.
Mr. Twing, your department, in your department, you oversee the Building Department, and we have inspectors who routinely spot things around town, be it signs that are out of compliance, or weeds that are too tall, or whatever. How often, if ever, do they measure lighting in businesses to see if it is in compliance?
Well, in order to deal with light compliance or noise compliance, really aren't done through the Building Department. Noise compliance is done through the Police Department with a noise monitor, and when we've got complaints on lighting, site lighting, for compliance with the zoning ordinance provision, we've required the petitioner to provide a light study, a lumen study, to show that they are in compliance. On occasions where there's questions of that, we've dealt with that through violations, and it ends up in the District Court for adjudication. But the building code enforcement officers aren't qualified to do lighting testing.
So if a citizen were to complain to somebody appropriate in the Community Development Department, then the Community Development Department would launch such a request of the owner?
Right.
Good, thanks. Mr. Casado?
All right.
Sorry, folks, sign, signage here, don't mind us.
But I would agree with the commentary, it's not germane to the sign.
Right, sorry.
And the sign appeal.
It's a separate.
Totally separate ordinances, and I can't imagine how you would tie the two together on whether you granted design variance or didn't, so, short of something I'm not aware of, I don't know how you tie the two together.
You still, I don't know if I'd say it quite intellectually as Mr. Twing did, but these people came in here for a sign variance, they did not come in here expecting to talk about lights.
Yeah.
Okay, if we've got a problem with the lights, that needs to be a separate issue, that they can address that. Right now, here, we are the sign board, not necessarily the Planning Commission at this way, we're the sign board, approving variance on this site, and so we should talk about the sign, and if the lights are a problem, then they need to bring themselves to the service, and we'll deal with that with a light discussion. I think we need to stay, stay to the sign issue that's in front of us.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the petitioner? Discussion between commissioners? Motion of any kind? Mr. Ellison?
I'll start us off, I'm, I'm gonna move that we allow all the variances that have been requested.
There a second?
Not seconding, but saying if that, if that motion asks them to downsize the triangle, I might second such a motion.
Okay, my motion does not at this time, but we can discuss it, that can, that can be a part of the motion, my motion is to go with what they've got installed up there, and, you know, let them go on with business. It sounds like there was a lot of miscommunication, we had ownership changes, we had contractor changes, and we had, you know, Sitgo saying, put this sign up, and so, you know, in this economy right now, we try to do everything we can to try to make things work, and, and go with that, but that's my motion, you can either accept it or not accept it, if it drops because of no second, then I'll submit it. If it drops because of no second, then I'll submit it.
Yeah, and I just want to get a clarification, because I went to the Robert's Rule of Order seminar that they had. I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a motion, if there's a second, then it's up for discussion. If it's not, if there's not a second, then there isn't a discussion.
It drops, yeah. Okay.
All right. There's a motion on the table to?
Has been, it has been seconded. It has not been seconded.
I'm just saying it's been spoken.
There's a motion offered, no support. And seeing no support, I'll pull my motion off the table. Offer the same motion, downsizing the pyramid signs to the, to the three foot.
I'll second that.
All right. The motion is to approve the variances with the exception of reducing the triangle on the fascia down to the three-foot size. Is there discussion? The motion's been seconded. Ms. Bickie.
Well, my comment would be that because that is the logo, and if it's made smaller, I would be relatively inclined to allow that, but with that reduction in size.
All right, Mr. Twain, were you gonna make a comment?
Yes, because I was gonna ask for clarification. If you downsize the triangle, is the intent so that it does not extend above the roof?
Yeah, that, that is the intent of my motion, so a sign does not project higher than the top of the roof, as was clarified by the petitioner.
Okay, so then item B, you would not be approving?
It would be unnecessary.
That's correct. True, dropping item B.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, just clarifying for the purpose of administration here, the motion in effect is to accept the four requests, the three requests not B. That's what, that's what we're voting on.
Yeah, just for clarification, we're doing a couple of things here. We're allowing two signs. That's a deviation from the ordinance, correct? And now, we're saying that those signs need to be 36 inches, or whatever they need to do, so that they cannot project above the top of the canopy, because we're not, we're not giving them that variance. They can't project. And then the other two variances deal with the banning signs.
Okay. Just Gantina.
Well, so I guess I have a question based on that. So, for then, item C, the 11.9 square feet that would need to be waived is based on the 42-inch sign. If the smaller sign is installed, do we need to subsequently adjust the square footage that we're waiving for that west fascia?
You can always, rather than trying to figure out the actual square footage today, I, I think you can grant the motion as written. It's, you can always go smaller on a variance than bigger.
Understanding the intent of the motion was to get rid of the overhang.
Rather than trying to figure it out right now.
That's why we have good...
Just maybe.
I think Mr. Gantina has a good question, but I think based on the fact that it's corporate logo, that triangle is gonna have to shrink, and like to Tim's, or to Mr. Twain's point, you know, below, and they're not gonna mess with the angle of it, because that would be off-brained. So, I think it's a little bit of protection there for keep it somewhere.
Yeah, and that was sort of my point. They would ultimately not need as much of a waiver for the sign to jump aside.
But if you guys need someone that's a master of geometry, I'm here for you.
We'll go to Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my sophomore year at high school, I could've done this calculation. Those days are long gone by. Yeah, just the, the, you know, when we talk about the amount of square footage we allow for a corporate name, it's a corporate name. And if their corporate name was Sit instead of Citgo, they would probably be within the size constraints. But, you know, you need as much space as you need to say the name of the company, and I don't have that objection. I hope all of you are taking to heart the lessons learned here in terms of double-checking permits and making sure, you know, all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Ms. Bickie.
I'm just gonna make a, as an introverted thinker, I'm gonna make a different comment with regard to the two items being on that facade. And actually, in some ways, if you're asking to reduce, and I'm not suggesting this, I'm just making a comment, reduce the logo, you could equally just take it down, and the logo is on the other sign that's over there, which would bring it more into compliance with both the space usage, as well as the intention of only having one sign on there. And so, I'm inclined to go with what the body is saying, but I'm saying that that would be a cleaner and simpler way, is just to take it off, and it would be in closer compliance with our actual letter of the law. So, for whatever it's worth, if anyone who's more of an extrovert thinker can process that, that's my thought.
Ms. Raspier.
I will not be supporting this motion. And as I really kind of think this, or I really have a hard time believing that somebody along the Citgo food chain had absolutely no idea that permits were gonna be necessary. And while I'm sorry that we've gotten to this point, even the fact that we've gotten to this point is unfortunate, that still doesn't change the fact, if we look at our criteria, the applicant must present evidence to show that if this article is applied strictly, unnecessary hardship or practical difficulties to the applicant would result based upon the following criteria. You look at A, that the property could not reasonably accommodate a sign permitted at this specific location. That's clearly not the case. This appeal results from exceptional and unique circumstances. It's just not the case. Unfortunately, this doesn't pass the muster test for me, so I cannot be in support of it.
All right. Thank you. Other comments? All right. I think we can vote. I just, yeah, I wanna say, I do share some of that, what we just heard from Commissioner Asprey, but I think that there's also an economic waste issue for me here to, to take things down, but if this petitioner says they can just order a new one, so, and switch them out, so that's not so bad. So, all right. We will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have six.
No, I'm gonna say no also, because I was convinced by him, I just hadn't.
Okay.
I'm persuasive.
Six. Five in favor, two opposed.
I think it's right.
Okay. Congratulations, you have your variance, and...
Good luck.
Work on the lights. Work on the lights.
Okay, the next order of business is another sign variance, SB 230402 at 1708 Crooks Road. Mr. Twain.
Again, that's been lucky for you at your April meeting.
I'm Nicole Gilbert, the owner of the station. We've got last month.
Yes.
And I'm Neer Manassar, Maya Construction and Imaging, with the installers of the image on the canopy.
All right.
We're not to that part.
Again, this was before you at your April meeting. The planning commission did grant a variance at that meeting. The petitioner asked for time to bring back a larger sign that would require additional waivers that weren't noticed or provided as part of the April packet. They are doing that at this point. You have two items in front of you, and it's to waive 7.28 square feet of the maximum eighteen, or eight square feet for the north and south of canopy facades, and to allow a portion of the canopy signs on the north and south facade project above the canopy. Again, this site on Crooks Road at Marywood.
All right, and for those who might not have been here last time, correct me if I'm wrong, the petitioners came before us, they had requested a, they did not, they were requesting a sign that was not on the plans, because the original plans had a smaller sign, and they, I believe the petitioners told us that, whoops, we actually ended up with a larger sign. Can we get that approved? And we said, no, you have to come back.
That's correct.
And that's why I'm back.
Okay. All right. You already gave your spiel, right?
I'm done.
Okay. Other questions? Tell us why you are entitled to this relief.
Say that again.
Please tell us why you are entitled to this relief.
It's not so much as entitled, it's just the Marathon logo itself. It's the brand. The size does not give off any more light, because I remember the issue we just had before. It doesn't give off any more or less light than the smaller sign, but it's just the standard Marathon logo that they put on those sites.
And if I could interject?
You certainly may.
You know, the, the site has gone through a large renovation.
Yes.
And it took us over a year to get all these pieces in place. I mean, we got it in just under the wire for having what we were approved to start it, you know? So, it, it's taken a long time to get all this stuff. So, these signs do exist, they are not put up. We only put up the sign that you guys approved. We have no lighting up yet, but that's been approved, because we're, our candle studies were all fine. So, these, these two big Ms. are just sitting on the side of my parking lot, waiting to go up. They could be reordered, but I kind of hate to do that, because I don't know if we're gonna get them in six months or a year, and the lighting can't be done until the signs are there, and it, there's a lot of pieces that go together. So, that's why I'm hoping for the relief.
All right. Thank you. At this point, other questions for the petitioner? Ms. Bickie.
How do the scale of the signs that you have waiting to go up compare to signs that are on, like highway type roads, and then also to signs that are in places that have more restrictions with their sign orientation?
These signs go over the canopy three inches and under three inches. There, you can barely tell that they go over the fascia. Where other signs, like the Citgo sign that we just looked at, you can, you see the defiance, the fact that it goes completely over the fascia. With the Marathon Ms., you can hardly tell that they go over.
I guess my question pertains to the city scale versus something that'd be more suburban, because it's for the city scale.
This actually is a brand-new image for Marathon, and actually, we're the first station getting it in Michigan. So, this is a new thing, so I really don't have an answer for you on that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gantina.
If you could just refresh my memory real quick. So, the dimension of the sign that's in the packet now is at 42 inches.
That's the one we're...
Was that the issue last time? Is the, the dimension of the sign that was in the packet was actually at 36 inches, but you in fact had the 42, and that's why we?
Correct.
Pushed?
I don't know if I remember, but a representative from RK, who is my fuel distributor, was here, and he gave you guys packages, and in his little package that he pitched out, it had for the 42-inch sign. And until you guys told us that we actually had asked for a 36-inch sign, we didn't even know that. It had always was going to be a 42-inch sign. So, that was kind of like, we didn't know. So, that's why we're back.
I have it still.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner? All right. Hearing, is there discussion on the table? A motion? Mr. Ellison.
Yeah, I'll put the motion out there again. I'm gonna ask, move that we waive the 7.28 square foot for maximum, for the eight-foot canopy sign on north and south, and also allow a portion of the canopy signs on north and south canopy fascia to project beyond the top of the roof. If I get a second, I'll...
All right. Is there a second?
Ellison.
Second by Mr. Gantina. Is there discussion? Mr. Ellison.
I think the circumstances we're looking at here is slightly different from what we just looked at. What we had before us was on Woodard Avenue, 12-mile road, very, very visible space. So, you put signs you want, and you just gotta, someone's gotta grab your sign from, out of the mix of signs. This is different. We've got a gas station that's on Crooks Road, which isn't, it's a busy street, but it's not a major thoroughfare. And you've only got, and you got one other gas station just north of you that you're competing with. And so, trying to make it fair, now, I grew up there, there used to be four gas stations in that corner.
Right.
Now, you pump gas in there for a while. But, but yes, but, but the thing being is you got, I think it's still a Shell, isn't it, the one on, it was a whatever?
Sunoco.
Oh, now, Sunoco.
Yeah, Sunoco.
But anyway, so, so, in fairness, to try to, you know, keep competition fair, so that, we had this discussion last week, that you're, you're a popular business, and you have funny sayings, and so we all like you, but I'm not, that's not giving this. I think they are worthy of having those bigger signs, just so they can get their message out there, get their signage out there. So, I would, that's why I moved it.
All right. Further discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, it feels to me like our prohibition against signs projecting above a fascia are to keep people from, like, taking advantage of it and putting way more messaging on their sign than we would permit. And here, that's not the case. This is like three inches and three, three inches, and it's not something that anybody's gonna notice, and it doesn't really add any more words or content to their sign than what a smaller logo would do. So, I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Raspier.
And for the exact same reasons that I stated before, I don't think that the hardships rise to the level of granting these requests, so I can read them back into the record if you want, but I'm going to stamp that with where I was on the last one.
All right. Bite Clyde back. All right. I guess I, I guess I would, I'll, go ahead. Ms. Bickie, your handle?
No, I was just gonna comment again with, again, the sign ordinance isn't for consistency's sake, and again, I don't think it is any kind of disadvantage to have one that is compliant that I would also be not inclined to support the motion.
All right, thank you. Their comment?
Just an observation and a comment. I mean, you drive around this city, and start looking at all the signs that are projected above the roof. Take a look at Chicken Shack, on Woodard, it has about six foot of point above it. I'm assuming that got approved by somebody, and it, it's, all it is is a big sign. I mean, you could find projecting signs anywhere in this community where they've gone above the edge of the roof. They have come from this committee, and we've given it. And I like what Shar said, this is not a sign that's adding any more description, but they are, it's simply meeting the corporate design of a Marathon logo, and it's gonna be two inches above, two inches below. To me, that's not a major issue.
All right. Ms. Bickie.
I mean, I'll just comment that I would, I have supported historic signs and signs that, the issue's not for me, the rising above or below, the issue is whether or not it's, it's anything to do with the economic situation of the Marathon. I think assigning compliance would probably be just as sufficient. That's my, my position.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a comment. I actually would agree with both of you. There's no reason, there's, there's no, you know, the property, every single property we've ever had for a sign variance, in my recollection, the whole time I've been on the board, did not qualify under Section 8. Nobody can qualify for that, because they can always have a sign. I've never seen one otherwise. So, we could turn down all of the sign variance requests, and I think that would be perfectly appropriate, because people can get, can put complying signs on. In this case, this is, seems more like it was a whoops, and I personally just don't, you know, you're balancing the hardships against the benefit. This is a business owner of the community, I think we can grant some relief here. I don't think it was on purpose, and I, I will support the motion. Be consistent also with the last one. Mr. Gantina.
So, I guess I have a question for Mr. Twain, real quick. I'm just noticing here, so previously, the amount of sign that is proposed was 11.25 square feet, requiring a variance of 3.25. Currently, the request is for five, 15.28 square feet, so a variance of 7.28. Am I understanding it correctly, that it's the, the difference of the Marathon sign going from 36 to 42 is what's causing that change, or did the, the other signs get bigger as well?
No, it's just the, the sign that's being proposed, the, the size of it compared to what's allowed.
Okay, so that everything else is the same as before, it's just that one size is getting bigger, which was changing the calculation. Got it, thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? Okay, well, I'd say it's about time to call for the vote. Now, just to be clear, the motion is to grant the variances as requested, A and B, and motion was seconded. Are we ready to vote? Looks like we are. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, there are five yeses, two nos, motion passed, congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next order of business under other business, potential sign ordinance amendment and lighting around doors and windows. Mr. Twing?
At your last meeting, the planning commission asked staff to look at regulations that would prohibit channel or tube lights around windows or doors of commercial buildings. What we have done is grabbed the provision that is contained in the marijuana establishment regarding similar-type lighting, is prohibiting it around those specific establishments or business operations. We're proposing that this actually be placed in the sign ordinance and treated as a sign, very similar to what currently is in there in terms of string lights and other types of light, and treating it in that fashion. The wording is, as I said, grabbed from the provisions that are related to marijuana establishments. Since this is in the zoning ordinance, this would simply be a recommendation to the city commission. If you're comfortable with it, but it's not required, it's not a zoning ordinance revision where you'd have to hold a public hearing here.
Okay, so this is or isn't part of the zoning ordinance, just for the record?
It's not as part of the sign ordinance.
Okay. So what we need to do here is have a discussion and a vote to recommend this, oh, can we pass this on our own, is what you're saying?
You can, you can recommend these provisions to the city commission
Okay, okay.
as part of the sign ordinance.
Okay. All right, is there discussion about this? Mr. Cantina?
So on the issue of non-conforming status, if I understood the report correctly, one of the distinctions is to make this part of the sign ordinance versus the zoning ordinance. In doing so, it would, if it was in the zoning ordinance, it would allow for non-conforming status, if I understand correctly. By doing it in the sign ordinance, would not allow for that non-conforming status. Can you just explain that a little bit more in terms of why one would be more advantageous versus the other, or?
Well, the zoning ordinance has a, and case law has determined that when a zoning ordinance provision is put in place, anything that existed at that time is considered non-conforming. It can continue to exist in terms of those provisions. It's very much like a setback on a building, or if you change the parking standard. If you did, if you complied at the time you established it, you get to continue to move forward. The sign ordinance, and part of the reason the sign ordinance is separate from the zoning ordinance, a lot of communities do put their sign ordinance in the zoning ordinance. The City of Royal Oak decided to treat them separately as a standalone ordinance, so that it did not have that standing. And that's why you see in many occasions petitioners in front of you appealing the sign ordinance when they have a non-conforming sign. In order to put up another sign, they have to deal with that one. So, very similarly, if a business that had these types of lights in the windows wanted to put a new sign in, you would have, they'd have to come before you to seek a waiver to allow them to stay.
All right, so I think it's that last part that clarified it for me. By going, by these provisions going into the sign ordinance would essentially give us the right to ask for the property to come into compliance, but it doesn't necessarily indicate that there would be, you know, some sort of task force going out and looking for these and forcing properties into compliance.
No.
Okay, that makes it clear, thank you.
Okay, looking for people to, Commissioner Douglas?
I just wanna say, hooray. I felt strongly about this for a long time. I brought it up in the past, and it didn't go anywhere, but the marijuana ordinance gave us the language in order to be able to do this. Commissioner Beeky spoke about design standards in a community, I think this is clearly a design standard. Those lights around the windows, and Commissioner Casada may say this, or has said this to me in the past, that those lights around, you know, architectural lights are a sign. They are sending a message, and I don't think it's a message that we wanna send as a community. So I will move that the planning commission endorse this language and send it forward to the city commission for consideration and approval.
All right, I'm gonna, if I can follow up on that, I agree with all of that. I think the language is good language, but I just wanna amplify that, yes. My reading of the...
Do you have a second first?
Could we get a support?
Oh, do we, I could just, oh, I'm sorry.
That's my motion.
She made a motion. I'll support it.
Okay. Now, now we discuss. You were already discussing, that's what threw me off, so...
I'm in support of my motion. I'm sorry, you're right.
No, no, I don't think you can do that, somebody didn't stop you. Okay, so, I just wanna follow up, yes. My reading of the sign ordinance is that the channel lights are already prohibited, because the definition of a sign is a display which is either illuminated or affixed to a building which directs attention to, or is designed or intended to direct attention to the place of the business. These lights, and we've heard this before, because we had the one business owner here, she had the salon, and I brought up the fact that they had channel lights, and she said, "Well, we're trying to attract attention." Of course you're trying to attract attention, that's exactly what they're for. They're trying to, whether they're doing it completely consciously or not, they're trying to evade the sign ordinance, because they know they can't have another sign. So instead of having a sign, they put the channel lights up, or some other lit display, or they overlight their site. So I wouldn't even go farther, say, overlighting your site is also a sign. But I think this is overdue, I think it's also a clarification. Like I said, you could look at this, and I think a reasonable reading of the sign ordinance already prohibits these lights. And in fact, there are two other types of lights that are already prohibited under the statute at 607-10, and that is beacons and string lights. So clearly, the ordinance contemplates lights. And in fact, it says, "Any sign not expressly permitted is prohibited." So it's actually fairly restrictive, I think that this is a good clarification, and there may be other clarifications that I would like to see in the future, but I certainly support this. Ms. Beeky?
Yeah, I would like to also comment that I support, and I was glad to see it moving forward, and I remember our extensive discussions when we were working on the regulations around the marijuana establishments. And I'm wondering if Tim, or, excuse me, Mr. Twing, if, when the last time the sign ordinance was updated, I'm kind of curious, just as a relative newcomer, is one point. And then the other point is, I think, again, along the line with, as we work on the master plan, the zoning, I think the signs and the sign ordinance and some of this clarity as to what we desire and permit, I look forward to discussions on clarifying that at the right juncture. And I'm glad to see this lighting come now to this point.
What? Without a specific date, the last time I would say the sign ordinance had significant rewrites were when the Supreme Court made a ruling that addressed you basically couldn't redesign to tell it was a sign, along that lines, I'm paraphrasing, so it's been probably six years.
Thank you.
All right. Is there further discussion here? We had a motion to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment, and we had a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero, on the way to the city commission. All right, next order of business. The rules, let's see, rules of procedure, Mr. Twing?
Again, you saw a draft, a set of rules and procedures. The reason staff really brought it before you at prior meeting was to address and update the brownfield redevelopment portion, and to make sure it was included as part of your rules and procedures, since you serve as both bodies. At the last meeting, the planning commission had several areas that you'd like to, interim city attorney and myself to address. We have done that in the draft. Those are highlighted either by the addition highlighted in yellow, or strike-throughs are indicated in red through both the planning commission portion of the bylaws, as well as the brownfield redevelopment authority portion of the bylaws. We also added, after the discussion or the training session on rules and procedures, we've added a few items in regards to motions, clarifying some things in the document, and you'll see those that are highlighted, indicating a motion to rescind may be made by any member, and a motion to reconsider is also outlined in the bylaws. One item I would like to point out, and it would be Section 1110. The last sentence of that paragraph, in talking with interim city attorney and reviewing it again, we had just liked that last sentence stricken. It says, "The authority reserves the right to limit public comments and presentations to the board as it deems appropriate for the efficient operation of the board authority." We like that stricken, because I believe in our discussions, you can't limit the amount of overall public comment. You can simply address it in three minutes, and if it goes a half hour, it goes a half hour. If it goes two hours, it goes two hours. So if you're comfortable with these bylaws, a motion to approve with that being stricken would be staff's recommendation. If you have other revisions, comments, I think we'll both attempt to address answers to those.
Okay, I didn't know who had the hands up first over here, Mr. Ellison?
Oh, thank you. Ken, going back to your last comment about the authority reserves the right to limit public comments, what do you do in a situation when you've got troublemaker, and you wanna get him out of here? I mean, does that prohibit us from taking care of that?
No, it doesn't. You still have a right to maintain decorum. What that basically refers to, and I'll apologize to that, we went through so many revisions, and we had talked about removing that prior to coming to tonight's meeting, but I think it just got missed inadvertently, so sorry about that. It doesn't give you the inability to address disturbance of the public meeting. It basically, just removing the fact that you can still limit each speaker to three minutes, you just can't limit the overall, like, if you had 100 people, and all 100 people wanna speak, they each get their three minutes or less, and it doesn't change anything with regard to decorum.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? So, I think I brought this up before, and I can't remember what the answer was, but if, you know, this is usually a very business-oriented meeting, you know what I mean? People aren't paying to get their businesses, you know, signage issues, all of these things. There could be a thing on the agenda where people could clog up public comment for hours and hours and hours. Does the chair still have the right to say, "You know what, we're going to have, you know, an hour, two hours of public comment, and we're gonna do the meeting, and then we're gonna have public, finish public comment at the end of the meeting." So it's not a time restriction, but it's a, you know, in a unique circumstance, is it? As long as you let everyone speak, but doesn't necessarily say it has to be continuous, or can you have public comment and then move part of it to the end of the agenda?
Time shifting.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair? That's an interesting question. I haven't really looked at that. You know, the OMA in general requires that if you're required to have public comment, then anybody desiring to address the public body has that right. If you bifurcate that during that same public meeting, I'm not sure. I'd be happy to find that answer for you.
But I think the language here doesn't prohibit us from doing that. It would just be a matter of checking the statute to see if we did have the ability, if the chair wanted to exercise discretion on any particular night. Not that that would be a huge issue, but sometimes you have folks coming here, like, when I think about the music theater, or not the music theater, but the movie theater. You know, I get it, but it was like hours and hours and hours, and people had, you know, business before the city, and you can kind of say, "Well, you know, we're gonna move non-agenda-related items to the back of the, you know, or just say after two hours, we're gonna go into the meeting and then do the rest of the public comment."
Well, what you've done in the past is, if you've had a major item, you've made a decision whether to reorder your agenda, meaning if you've got some really easy items, you put those in front, just change the order of your agenda, you've done that. And that was gonna be a suggestion, you have the ultimate authority to approve your agenda, and if you expect that there's gonna be an issue where it's gonna take away from the business at hand because of the public comment, you could always decide that on a per-meeting basis to move the public comment maybe to the end of the agenda or after the business. I certainly think you have the full authority as a board to vote on your agenda and approve it, and move items around, so that might be a useful tool. But I'll certainly look into the other thing about possibly bifurcating the two.
Yeah, I'm just saying if it's not, I mean, if it's not prohibited in there, just to look at, I mean, it's the chair's privilege, but I think sometimes, like, on the non-agenda items, like, people come here and they talk about non-agenda items. So I think you say, "Well, tonight, obviously, everyone's here to talk about something that isn't even on the agenda tonight, so we're gonna put that at the end of the meeting, because it doesn't affect anything that we're gonna discuss that night." You know, I don't know, I just like, there's been a couple of occasions, even here at planning, where, not that the meeting's been hijacked, that's not the right way, but the efficiency and the other 10 people that are on the agenda don't get, you know, they're equally delayed, and that's sometimes challenging.
If I may, I don't think there is anything, you correctly observed, Mayor, that I don't think there is anything in this proposed rules of procedure that would prevent this board from taking that action.
Ms. Beeky?
I had a related question as I read through this, and I appreciated seeing this update, and I apologize that I wasn't able to be here in April. But the first thing I want to comment, that we have to be careful to distinguish between what is a public hearing on a specific item versus public comment, which is quite different in the planning, excuse me, city commission meeting, where there tends to be a lot more people with public comment, and the public comment is less associated with a specific thing, because I understand we're overseeing a public hearing, and so therefore, those comments do have to be taken in account at the time on that specific item before we would vote, because that is the place where the public has its only chance legally to make that comment. And as I've noted before, I'd like to see a more robust process with citizens before some of those things, so we can have some kind of negotiation and discussions, but that's, again, a different point. The point I wanted to ask, related to this one, I read it through before this meeting, was, and it relates specifically to this issue. To me, it seems like there should be a point at which, I don't know if it's at 11:00 PM or when it would be, that we sometimes would defer a vote on an item, especially those, to Mayor's point, that have had a lot of comments, to the subsequent meeting, so that we could, basically, in my opinion, in basic language, think straight when we're making those votes, because I felt sometimes when there is extensive comment, not on a, from a public hearing perspective, that I would benefit from a pause to vote later. And that was the only thing here that I, that didn't stand out to me as an option, whether or not that's something that just stands, that we could in a meeting just postpone. But maybe that's something that's just already given.
Well, you have the option on every item to vote to approve it with the conditions, deny items, postpone items for additional information. There's nothing that requires you to act the evening that you're holding that item on your agenda. So that's true of every item. It's simply the boards deciding that you've heard the public hearing, and you wanna postpone it. There's nothing that requires you to vote this evening on any of these items or any meeting.
I guess to further clarify, I mean, maybe if the hour's gone before four hours, is there ever a place where you say, "Okay, that's the end of the meeting," and you postpone the entire thing, just for the sake of, again, communication, thoughtfulness, et cetera? Different than that point you just made, Tim, which I appreciate that point.
Well, my reaction to that is, when those have occurred, and they've occurred twice in my lifetime working with the City of Royal Oak, the audience erupted. I can think of two cases that we were already at 12:31 in the morning, and there were still 100 people in the room, and they wanted to be heard, and they didn't wanna go home and come back next month. So that's a touchy item, to say we're not gonna deal with something else. You can get to the item, vote to postpone it after you've heard it, but to just call the meeting at some time, like, "I'll let you wait until..."
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I would agree 100%, especially if you're in the middle of that public comment portion, to, you would need to be very careful about trying to cut that public comment portion off. Now, if it concluded, I've seen other municipalities adopt bylaws, rules of procedures, that would say, "No business shall be conducted after a certain period of time, let's say 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, without a majority vote of the board to continue pass." Like, there are rules of procedure cutoff. I don't know if I agree or disagree with that. I mean, it's something you could do if you wanted to, but if you're in the middle of public comment, that's a very slippery slope to then just cut it off. And I don't think the OMA, they'd probably frown on cutting it off right in the middle of it, so...
My comment's not to cut off the public comment, rather, to say to ourselves that we won't make the vote, we will postpone the vote, and just to have some kind of, I'm just thinking whether or not it's reasonable to have an automatic trigger, that once there's been three hours of public comment, that we say, "Okay, to digest this information, we're just gonna vote next month." That's what I'm more thinking about, not to cut off the public, but rather to have our, again, as an introverted thinker, have time to think, rather than the pressure to vote on the spot when it's been a hot issue. And again, I'm not necessarily recommending a change, I just wanted some clarification.
And that's when you would, you could make a motion to table or postpone to let it sink in and digest.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellison?
Okay, my evil little mind is coming up with some...
Okay, my evil little mind is coming up with scenarios. I've been in situations where we've taken a meeting well into 1:00, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, and it's just, it's just, you can't do it. And losing total satisfaction, none of us are up here paid except these guys, but they're supposed to be here. But, you know, we're giving our time, and we all have lives besides that. So I have been in a situation where public comment was dragging on so long, people would leave, the table would leave, and we'd lose our quorum. Does that mean the meeting stops at that point? Well, this is kind of my firing, Nick, I'm doing.
You know, I think I have to. You lose quorum, so the public board wouldn't be able to make any decisions or take any actions that evening. I don't think it would stop the actual meeting. You could still technically conduct the meeting, but you couldn't take any action or take any official vote because you wouldn't have quorum. Because you've already started the meeting and then lost quorum after it, and I'm not that familiar with that part of Robert, if you lose quorum during the meeting.
We're going to test you, Nick.
You certainly can't take good action. Whether or not then you lose the ability to continue the meeting, that's a good question, and I'd like to know the answer, and I'm going to look for it.
Your assignment for next week.
Thank you.
It's a publicly-driven filibuster.
It's interesting.
Now I can't remember if the motion on the table.
And I think you would be required to lose quite a few members to get up and not to have a quorum.
Well, yeah.
I mean, you only need four of you to run a meeting, so three would have to get up.
Depends what you start with.
Four would have to run, so.
All right. Other comments? I have a couple.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just saw, you know, a scenario where we've got four site plans on our agenda, or combination of special land uses and site plans. And the first one is a hot button with a lot of public comment, a lot of, you know, moving parts, right? And then you've got three others who have paid their money to get before the planning commission. And I don't know that we can set a rule here, but I think Ms. Bicki is making a point that if there is an item that is like that, that we should consider postponing a decision so that the other three people who are, you know, deserve to be heard, get heard.
Well, generally speaking, when I'm putting the agenda together, I will put items that I think will go rather rapidly first, and the items that will take longer towards the end, so that the people that are here, that you can deal with, they can get their case heard and get out before you spend the entire evening, so.
Good plan.
Okay. And in a case where somebody wanted to request that the commission postponed a vote, any member could make that motion, is what I would understand?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, okay. All right. I have a couple of comments, and one of them does have to do with the public comment. If you look at Article 4.8D1, I was surprised, you know, oftentimes, people come up to the rostrum when they're public comment, and they start addressing individual members of the commission, or they ask questions, and I was always under the impression to say, hey, we're not talking, you're talking. But if you look at this language, it says, "public comment," quote, "public comment from citizens seeking information." Can I get some insight why this is worded like this? A citizen seeking information at the public comment? I wasn't aware that that's what they did.
Well, they can ask questions and.
Rhetorical questions.
Yes. It doesn't mean they're going to get that answer at the time, you're not going to debate it with them, but it's totally appropriate for staff to address them later or have them referred to staff to get their answer. It's not necessarily that the intent there is for them to get the information at that time, but they can come and ask for something.
Okay. All right. Good enough. All right. Other comments I have, I like what was done, I'm glad that a lot of the changes were made. I still have a little bit of a problem with, where is it? 11.3. 11.3 and the use of the word board, in this case, the phrase, Board of Directors, capital B, used throughout, it still exists, and they're board, and board of directors is never defined. I'm a little perplexed why we would have a word used, capital B, without a definition, and I don't think we need the Board of Directors in there because the planning commission is serving as the authority. So it seems to me, to clean this up even further, we'll get rid of the reverence of Board of Directors, say the business and affairs of the authority shall be managed by its members or its commissioners, because we're the planning commission, and then get rid of the word board where it still exists, and there are some places where it exists. So that's just clarification.
I think that may be required by state law. Having a Board of Directors on the Brownfield Authority would be part of the state law.
If that's the case, then we should have the Board of Directors defined in accordance with state law, and then have the rest of the ordinance be in conformance with that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's what I think. It's there for.
I did not go back and read the Brownfield Enabling Act or whatever it is. But that's my comment. Commissioner Douglas?
So you may find that the Board of Directors is everybody but the executive director who can't vote.
That's not what it says, though. That's what I'm saying. I don't care.
I understand that.
I just wanted, if we're going to use a term, it should be defined.
I agree.
Yeah, so. And my other comment is I'm not sure we need that particular term, unless it's required by statute, which I have no idea. Okay. Those are my comments about that. So, given, there are other comments about these amendments. I would, although I can't make a motion, I would like to see that the issue with the definition of the Board of Directors be addressed and brought back to us, but that would be what I would want.
Does anybody else have any other changes?
Well, I'm kind of curious what the city attorney thinks about that.
I was just going to try to pull that up, because I did not look at that either, so.
Because it seems like a very cogent point being made. But if there's a simple explanation for why the language is the way it is, then there may not be a need to postpone.
Well, I believe, and again, if we can find it, that'd be great to find the statute. But I believe, very similar to the Downtown Development Authority statute, they have a Board of Directors that are appointed. So I believe it's probably coming out of the statute, but I don't have it in front of me, so I can't confirm that.
If I may? So I'm reading from the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, which is the controlling state law, and it defines, it doesn't define Board of Directors, it defines board means governing body of an authority. You are the governing body of this authority as the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This, the commission is the governing body, so it makes sense to maybe just change and set a Board of Directors, just the governing body of the authority or the commission. Yeah, not that we're going to rewrite everything right at the moment here, but then it would say something to affect the planning commission, so serve as the board, and then the board shall conduct the business, and then we would use board throughout appropriately. But there has to be some connection between the board and something.
11.1 says the planning commission shall serve as the Brownfield Authority.
Right, but not the board.
Is there some impetus to move this tonight?
My suggestion would be just send it back, and we can rework the language. I haven't really had a chance to read it in depth, so, I mean, if we want to take, unless there's something to say we ought to have this for next meeting, my suggestion would be just to take it back, and we can offer our tweaks to Nick or Gary.
Is, okay, and do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, my question was, are there any other sections that anybody's concerned about? Because if not, I will move that we ask the city attorney and the community development director to reexamine, what was the section, 11.3?
Three.
And report back to us at our next meeting.
But does that, does that motion, I'll support the motion for purposes of discussion, does that motion allow us to contact if we find something else? If I go home and read this, can I say, I don't like this section, but your motion is very specific?
I think that you can contact the department anytime you want. That's what I think.
But her motion is very specific about sections. Change this section.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Does, okay, I'm just wondering if that's really all that restrictive. You're limiting it, the commissioner is limiting it to one section or just the sections we discussed tonight? Is there a clarification there?
Uh.
Or we could.
Well, I mean, if the staff brings it back next month, and Commissioner Ellison has other questions or objections or changes, then we make those changes and bring it back another month later. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that by next meeting, any questions I have, I can look it up and address them somehow. It's not a major deal. I just want to make sure that if we come up with some, you know, different ideas, are we allowed to have Nick put that in the language? If your motion says specifically these two articles, I think you mentioned two things specifically.
I'm not voting to, I'm not moving to approve it with those changes, I'm moving to send it back. As I say, whenever it comes back in front of us, we can still rewrite it.
Let's just go, send it back for rewrites and improvements, but you did, if I heard you correctly, you specified two sections.
Send it back to staff to especially look at 11.3.
Okay. Is it whatever?
Okay. I would say, just my own experience as an observer, is that whenever you send back an ordinance or a statute for the drafting service, it always comes back with additional changes anyways, no matter what you do. Mr. Gandina?
Well, I was just going to say, I don't think it's overly restrictive in the sense that if you did have other changes that you would like to make that did get incorporated into the document before it came back to us next meeting, we would still have that to read and discuss at the next meeting to make any other additional changes if we wanted. So I don't think the motion's overly restrictive if you have any.
Anybody else besides me want to bust a quorum?
It's only 8:42. The motion is on the table to, and was seconded, to send the draft back to look especially at 11.3 and come back with improvements for discussion next meeting, correct? Okay. That's what's on the table. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Back to the drawing board, gentlemen. All right. Next order of business is non-action items. Mr. Twink?
Both of those items are simply informational items. There's a copy of the road commission road report, and then the administrative approvals that have occurred. Unless there's questions, there's no action necessary.
All right. Any questions for the department? Mr. Ellison?
No, I don't have any questions. I did want to use this opportunity that if we still have anybody still watching, catch this, look this up on the line, get this agenda, and read the report of approved, administration approved, because there is a lot of work going on in this city that unless you know what the permits were pulled for, there's a whole lot of answers in there, the questions people are asking, especially ones I see on Facebook, it's right here. So pull it up, and you'll see what's going on. We see, at this table, we see the big ones, where we've got to negotiate and all this stuff. These are the ones, these are the people that have come in, met all the criteria, met all the ordinance, and they get a building permit, and they build a building. People go, where'd that come from? How come they didn't go for the plant commission? Because they didn't need to. I'm just saying, you know, I read it a couple of times, do a lot of checking on where the address is, but it's a very informative report, if you want to know what's really, I mean, it's three pages, it's three or four pages long, about a lot of stuff going on in the city, so.
In a small font.
In a very small font, yes.
That's what computers are for. Ms. Bicki? Just a different comment, but I appreciate that comment, because like I always say, I'd like to see those administrative, it's interesting to see how many things get done that don't need special permission, and they go through like that. But the one thing I want to say about the roads, since it's here, it was interesting to see, we've discussed a lot about Woodward Avenue, it's in the master plan, it's one of our key discussion points, and it was very strange to see, and I'm a person who doesn't drive much, but I was on Woodward and see a bunch of work that seemed to be in Royal Oak, maybe it was Berkeley, because we thought Woodward wasn't going to get touched until four or five years ago, but there were a lot of Coens. Anyway, I was just surprised to see that, and I'm just commenting because I didn't expect it. But I still look forward to the discussion on how we might modify it in the future.
If I could just, I just want to clarify the list I talked about, this is commercial, this is not residential. You're not seeing home permits on here.
All right. Mr. Gandina?
I just want to speak to Ms. Bicki's point real quick. If you're talking about Ferndale, that is for a road diet that's happening on Woodward.
No, in Royal Oak, I'm talking about there's some work done, being done. I know about the Ferndale Road Diet, and I hope we replicate something near it, yeah. Anyway.
All right. Are there other comments regarding these two non-action items? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to ask, do any of the seven commissioners here tonight wish to make any statements prior to getting to the conclusion of the meeting? Ms. Bicki?
Just one, since I mentioned the master plan, just as a reminder to people, if they are listening, that the charrettes and the public meetings are going to be in the week of May 15th to May 20th, just so people know, and it's on the Plan Royal Oak website.
All right. And I believe we're all invited on the 19th, yes?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, you're invited the whole time.
Right, but specifically for the 19th, okay. Other.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Going back to a comment we heard on public comment tonight, we have not done the master plan yet. It's not done. There have been no decisions made, there is, you know, we're not building condos on every corner of the city, and I was confronted by someone last night saying we're going to rezone the entire city to multifamily, and no decisions have been made on anything. We're just starting the process, but the rumors are out there. So what I told this woman last night is pay attention, read up, find the information, separate fiction from fact, and know what you're talking about before you blurbish out this thing in a public meeting about how terrible Royal Oak is. But people need to understand, we haven't done it yet. There's been no decisions made, there's been no discussions, we had a couple preliminary meetings so they could get started, but that process starts this week, okay? And then we can start getting our ideas, we can start making decisions, but right now, it's nothing. It's nothing, nothing, nothing.
But the communists.
Huh? But, you know, we'll still have three hours of public comment on nothing, but.
Okay. Any other commissioners wish to make a statement of any kind, other than to welcome Clyde back once more?
Thank you, sir.
And we have a full team now again, so it's wonderful. All right. If there is no other statements made by the commissioners, I would be looking, oh, Mr. Gandina?
Yeah, I guess I do want to make one more comment for the public record. To Mr. Ellison's point, for anyone that is concerned about the master plan, then I would encourage them to show up to many of the community engagement sessions and express their feelings and opinions there, because that is the actual process. Anything else is conjecture and rumor and hearsay. So certainly, if there are folks that are concerned with the process, then show up, have your voice heard, and that would be the best way to effect change.
Exactly.
Appreciate that. All right. Anything else?
Could we drag it on some more, so we think it's on the talk about?
We'll be adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.